...for use in emergency situations. This has been in practice for many years. We didn't have a policy up to this point. And our district staff members did participate in the training from the very care before this started the school year this year related to use.
Action items. Administrator of the new school board member open office.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota? And that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a member of the school board of Sisseton School District 54-2, Reverend Scott Collins, South Dakota, to the best of your ability? And in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during the continuance inside office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do. I swear that I will adhere to state laws and regulations pertaining to education. I will accept office as a board member as a means of unselfish service. I will transact school business only in regular sessions. I will represent the entire community without fear or favor. I will remember at all times that I am one of the team. I will accept all board decisions once they are made and assist in carrying them on effectively. I will delegate acting as chief school administrator as the board executive and confine board action to policy making, planning, and appraisal. I will employ only competent trained personnel and use only on the recommendation of the school or chief school administrator. I will preserve the right and obligation of teachers to teach controversial issues fairly and without bias.
Congratulations.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Motion to approve personnel reports, staff assignments.
Non-certified new hires are Susan Frye Farmil as a high school care professional, Riley Rigolski in the loss program, Elsie Williams as a cook.
We have two non-certified resignations. The first, dear superintendent Meyer, an official handing in my resignation from my position at Westside School. I've accepted a position in Hankins, North Dakota, will start on October 21st. Respectfully, Deborah Ellsworth. And also, dear Mr. Frederick, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from high school secretary at Sisseton School District effective two weeks from today, October 8th. During my time at Sisseton School District, I've been very fortunate for the opportunity to grow and learn more about Sisseton. Your guidance and support have prepared me well for my future. I hope that we will have opportunities to collaborate in the future. And please let me know how I can be of help during the transition period. I wish you and Sisseton High School the very best going forward. Sincerely, Bobby.
Okay, and then we have some lane changes. Allison Deitch from a bachelor's to plus sixteen. Amy Keough from a bachelor's to a master's degree. Kurt Latah from a bachelor's plus sixteen to bachelor's plus thirty-two. Holly Maidenwell, bachelor's plus thirty-two to MAE plus sixteen. Kelly Stickland, bachelor's to bachelor's plus sixteen. And Brittany Bethland from a master's, excuse me, bachelor's plus sixteen to a master's degree.
I'll make a motion to approve the hires and resignations.
Discussion. On the favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve open enrollment application.
We just have one open enrollment application for this school year. The student is here and attending school with us this year, so I would fully support the open enrollment application.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And the intent to re-enroll applications for students that had open enrolled out of the Sisseton School District? And is enrolling back into the Sisseton School District as a freshman student and has been here through the course of year.
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approve two board policies.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the 2020-21 staff retention bonuses.
So, we found out just several weeks ago in our ESER 3/ERP. Funding was being reviewed by the South Dakota Department of Education that in order to do some one-time bonuses that were presented last spring during certified staff negotiations, during meet and confer for our non-certified staff? That we do have to have official language that's aligning ESER funds to some type of COVID relation in order to have those two things align with each other. So last spring, the board authorized a payment of $1,500 for returning certified staff member during the certified negotiations process. And in negotiations, that language read a one-time bonus of $1,500 for certified staff under contract for 2020-21 school year who return in the 21-22 school year. Will be prorated to the FTE status for those under 1.0 FTE and will be paid for 21 payroll. And the board also authorized payment of a $500 bonus to non-certified staff when wages were established for this school year. Stating that staff employed at the end of the 2021 school year will receive a $500 bonus in November payroll. Staff members leaving prior to that November payroll are not eligible for the bonus. So in order to meet the requirements for the Department of Education and their auditing standards? They are recommending that the board approve a motion that states a motion to authorize a one-time bonus of $1,500 for certified staff under contract? And the 2021 school year who return in the 21-22 school year prorated to the FTE status for those under 1.0 FTE to be paid in the November 21 payroll? And a one-time $500 bonus for non-certified staff with employment agreements. Employed at the end of the 2021 school year who were employed at time of November 21 payroll? As recognition of the Sisseton School District staff's extraordinary service, recognition of the extra duties they have and will continue to have? And as all critical employees that have to work above and beyond the typical duties and effort to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19? And or experience to maintain a sanitary and safe environment for all? In order for the school district to remain open with face-to-face instruction and ensure adequate staffing? So all of those components of language are required in order to use ESER 2 funding for that particular staff bonus that was authorized last spring. And just for your information on the second page of this document? This shows some of the background of coding and what the full salary plus benefits amounts are going to be for those bonuses. When we are working with any of these ESER 1 or 2 or 3 grants? We have to break down every single piece of funding by building, by object code, by allowable use? And then give narrative for each of those things and why we were using those funds. So this is just an example of how we have to code that anytime we go in to use any of that funding. So this is just the coding in the computer system that the Department of Ed has to authorize for bonuses. Just some viewing pleasure from that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to approve the Westside Kitchen HVAC.
Alright, so one of the things that we'd asked you to do last month was to approve the advertisement of bids for two projects. The first project we asked you to advertise for bid was for the Westside Kitchen. And in your packet, you do have the bid that was provided to us. We only received one bid from CDJ. It was to replace the two eight-ton horizontal ge units for the specs that were provided in that bid. The total cost of that project is $27,357. The funding for that project will come from the Food Service Fund. And that project has been authorized by the Department of Education. So we could begin that as soon as this is approved by the board.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the practice facility HVAC.
So the second project that we're asking for approval contingent upon funding for tonight? Is a replacement of four 10-ton horizontal to thermal units in the practice facility. When it gets cold outside, those thermostats are basically at their end of life. They kick out. If you've ever heard somebody say that the practice facility is really cold? It's just basically at a point where we need to replace those thermostats and increase some of the ge units in there as well. This particular bid is also from CDJ Electric and the amount is $58,910. They do know that they have to follow the Davis Bacon Care Wages Act if we're to do that project. And they also know that this project is pending ESER funding approval. So this project has been presented to the Department of Education for approval in that funding amount. But we could not start that project until the Department of Ed says that we can go ahead and do that. Your board authorization tonight would allow us to contact them as soon as we would get to partner with that authorization.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve contract with TeachWell Solutions.
TeachWell Solutions is based out of Sioux Falls and it is an organization we have other work with. We're actually partnering with them this year for our speech language pathologist that is doing teletherapy services. They have partnered with the South Dakota Department of Education to provide training and support to district staff? To be able to provide applied behavior analyst training to staff members during this current school year. With this, two district staff will be identified to complete a training. And in that, will become a registered behavior technician. A registered behavior technician has to work underneath a board certified behavior analyst. TeachWell would supply and provide funding for the board certified behavior analyst? And would also provide a training stipend to these two individuals. In order to serve in that capacity? We would just need that VCPA to support the registered behavior tech. Throughout further years, if there isn't additional funding for this, those people still have the training. They just can't be considered a registered behavior tech within their employment. Do you have anything else you'd like to? You have a little more information than I do about this, Dr. Gresser?
I don't know really, but I think the hope is that TeachWell would be able to offer contract days, kind of like we get our other things that we're working with. I mean, we've been working with, we gave a consultant from TeachWell prior to something like this happening to try to help us, right? We made your plans. But this will be a little bit more structured and give us some people on site who will be able to, right? And monitor those plans and keep data on it to show how they're working or not working so that they can be adjusted. So, I think that TeachWell hopes that we can still have that oversight from the VCPA without having to hire? Because we probably wouldn't be able to hire a VCPA locally. It's a way to get more rural districts to have that same type of service.
Yeah, and these registered behavior techs, we don't have anybody in the district that has any of this level of training. We've not been able to find this training before. We've not been able to provide this training to staff before. So just the fact that we would be able to have a couple of staff that could be trained as registered behavior techs? Would be a support to students and other teachers who have been in the district as we move forward as well.
Is there anything, is there anything that you would open up? Do you have interest in it? We have some people who would be ideal for it, yes? And it's gonna be a commitment. It's gonna have to go through forty hours of online training and then take a test? Before they get to that certification piece? And then our expectation for those people is that they will be the experts on site to help us put together these plans and progress on it for the plans as well too.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Period. Motion to approve board representative for ASBSD Delegate Assembly.
Delegate Assembly is slated for Friday, November 19th, and here during quota. Each year, ASBSD asks for one individual from the school board to be the delegate or the delegate assembly. At Delegate Assembly, the delegates vote on the proposed resolutions and the standing positions. And those resolutions and standing positions are then what ASBSD during the course of the legislative session are really working towards and working for. So it's basically when they go to the legislators and state, this is our position. It's coming from the school district stating that we agree with these specific positions. So each year, we just appoint one person to that.
And thank you, sir.
This is pretty easy, right? I'm supposed to either jury or do anything.
Is there anybody looking to go? I know I'm gone on the 19W.
And it's honestly not always worked out for us to have somebody that's actually attended. It's probably been more likely than not that somebody has not attended from our district than has attended from our district. This delegate just becomes kind of that one person if any clarity is needed in the district's position.
I can go.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Woody for the ASB delegate.
I'll say.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Woody.
Identify meeting as a November meeting? Identify items for the November meeting?
At the November meeting, I'll ask you to provide authorization for our land lease and pay lease things. And I'm also waiting on some additional information from Co-op Architects as well.
Do we want to set up time to have a board retreat anytime between now and the first of the year? We mentioned it earlier. I don't know if that's still on anybody's radar or not. Find it, so. Don't know if this would be a good time. Put it on a calendar or visit. Nobody does. Carry on. If somebody does, set a date.
Do you want to go last minute?
It doesn't matter. I'm just asking if people wanted to get together and have something. It's been a while. Over a year.
We didn't have one last year because of COVID. So it's been two years since we've had.
Yeah, right. So, if we get together, do you want to do it for the first of the year or after the first of the year? Somebody have any suggestions? What's that?
Fourth of March?
Okay. So something off term? On November, December?
I'd say December, November, November.
Yeah, we're sure December works better if they do it.
She said after, is it four?
Oh, do you say after the first?
I think before.
After would be better.
Would it be better after?
It'd be better after.
December 24th? Some time in February maybe?
It's not gonna be much. Bill is bringing one.
Yeah, let's see.
Are Mondays the preferred dates? Is that the date that works?
If we can maybe not put it on a game night, that'd be great. Anybody else have anything else to put on for? Communication items, administrative reports.
David, do you want to go first?
Well, this is a changing season. It's only just fall yet. We don't want any back to back stuff. And the weather really isn't going pretty smooth. We're still on lock for the summer. That's kind of strange. And otherwise, too much to say. I do know that Friday, the firemen are going to get to go and visit the Westside School. So that ought to be fun. For the fight fires any week. So if you'd like to see what they're up to come on or? Maybe let the off air roll.
Jeff?
I didn't come prepared to have you, but I just was asked to be here in case there's an issue. I guess I just asked, does anybody have any questions of me?
I do. Classification for football. Are they gonna look at your testimonials or do you have any?
We, when I say we, the superintendent from Summit, probably will be, you know, go to the hills. Talk to me about that football scene. I've been contacting Mr. Meyer hard and I haven't heard anything back from him. Since I've been activities director? When John Prostran, the Indian Activities Association office, and Lady Curry? There was a discussion about that. I said, you know, I feel a lot of it up to them. Nothing's been done in ten years. So, I don't know.
So if you're down, please go for it.
Yeah.
I think if it did pass, we'd be like nine B.
What was your question?
We'd be like nine B.
Well, I know.
What's your question for free and reduced as a component of?
The classification.
So, Dr. Sordos has shared, so we're in a one-year reclassification right now for football.
Yeah, we do it again this fall.
And he shared that part of that too, and this was a conversation from last probably winter? He shared that one of the reasons behind that too is he's looking at states like Minnesota that do use that free and reduced lunch component? As a portion of their classification system. So there's a PowerPoint system that they use. If you're in a class, whatever, and you've won a state tournament three times? Then they might bump you up a class? Or if you have a high economically disadvantaged student population, they might bump you accordingly to your students that are eligible for those services? So I think they're looking into it, but. So I think they're looking into it, but there's been nothing formal that's come through any of their advisory committees as far as a year's of actual proposal to bring that economically disadvantaged status to the table. Do I think it would be a wise thing to do? Yes. Um, because along with that, and this is why, to my understanding, Minnesota went to this too. When you're looking at student population that is in a high economically diverse community, they're not as likely to be participating in some activities as other communities would be either. So that, that is something I think they're seriously considering, but I don't know if it'll actually go through or even make it to the advisory committee. That's kind of up to those groups if they choose to bring it through as a proposal or not.
Cause parents have been asking, like, is there anybody that you can contact?
Um. Dr. Sordos said the Activities Association wouldn't be the person to probably contact for that. Definitely. Yeah, so like I said, I don't know if there's any formal movement in that direction. Um, would I appreciate seeing that? Yes, absolutely. Um, but as far as who to contact, I would recommend that they reach out directly to Activities Association.
That, that doesn't change. We're just all the same. We end up in eleven K. Is there any talk of just petitioning valid at eleven K?
Yes, that's a possibility, but you obviously know when you do that, then you, you definitely eligible for playoffs.
Yeah.
And I believe out of the room this last year, this this year, Ray here, which is pretty similar school, District Two R's, did that and they were ineligible, but, you know, if you're gonna be winning once, zero games.
You're not gonna be up anywhere else.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's gonna get better.
Yeah.
You know, everybody goes through cycles like this.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, football, because of the number of kids that are involved, it's a little harder to bounce back. But, you know, we had that group of kids last year, and I've had to do that for all everything, you know, in all their activities, you know, most part, so. That's a possible issue sometimes, running for kids, you know.
Yeah.
And then internally to, um, Mr. Frederick and Jack also look at our students enrollment lists. And I think every year that we've done reclass, every year we've been reclassified, we actually have students that we petitioned out that are maybe included in the original student count, but they've already used their semester's eligibility. So then we go back and forth with the Activities Association and we ask to remove those students from our student count. And oftentimes that's how we kind of bounce down into that B level from a K level. Our true numbers put us in the A, but then once we remove some of those students, then we're into that B group. But we're really always on that C point, an A score or a B score for football.
I've been out here at least twice that I can recall, maybe three times, to do that work or bear. Cause if you were classified as a school, probably you'd be, you'd have a less college. Moving some of those numbers around with the kids now. And if you can't participate when you're twenty years old, you know, maybe take it off the road.
Sure. With our enrollment numbers, are they up? If I remember right, they were up a little bit with high school, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share that.
Okay, I was just curious, is it gonna have an effect, wrestling, I know has been kinda teetering, are we gonna bump from B to A eventually?
You know, I'm not exactly sure where are they, but I, uh, it, it could be interesting.
And the thing that we never know either is it's all contingent on where the other schools are. So if all the schools are growing, then it's all the same. If we're getting bigger and somebody else is getting smaller, then, if we're, if we're getting smaller and they're getting bigger, so it's, it depends on what's happening in all the other schools across the state that are about the same size as we are too.
Last, one of the last board meetings that I was to, we were considered to be in the D number, but four schools that were in the A's went to the, the, what, the Audations or whatever. Yeah, Audations, they, so that, of four people top in the A's. Yeah. Just.
Yeah.
First thing, I'd like to, uh, take a moment and thank the high school staff for making homecoming successful. Um, they take, uh, a lot of pride in planning and preparing, and that makes, uh, what can be a very stressful day. Nervous day and, uh, makes you feel much better. So thank you to all the high school staff, um, for helping out on that, that particular day. Parent teacher conferences, I did, uh, chat to see how many adults we had sign in. And we had sixty-two, so that's roughly about twenty percent of, of our parents, guardians, et cetera. Truancy, I've been working, um, getting some paperwork done regarding that. I think you talked a little bit about attendance, absence, exempt, et cetera. It's very concerning to me, knowing how important it is, number one, that you get to school. You need to be here to be successful. Whatever you do, you have to be there. And it always isn't about if you feel like it or, or wanna do it, you have to do it. Um, and then once you're here, you gotta apply yourself. And it is alarming how many students we have that are not here. And also, on another level, the transfer kids that we have, I'll be meeting with some tomorrow, and I'm sending truancy papers on them. Now, is it how they've been at school or when they were in school, they missed how many days wherever they were at attendance at. Just, it's hard in life to, to be successful when, um, you're not present and then you're not making the effort when you're here, um, to do so. Over the weekend, I, I did some reading about, um, COVID and how it has affected our students. And particularly, uh, there are a couple of numbers. One school district spent in the excess of two million, one was like between twelve and thirteen million, putting people out to check on these students that were not engaged. And encourage them to obviously get engaged, cause it's tough. Research tells you that once I get the students at the high school and they're sixteen years of age and they get a year behind, they don't pay attention. And the article basically was talking about, was it worth it, all that money to do that? And you guys know I've talked about this before. They're making a choice, whether they're online or in person, they're deciding that for themselves. Is it, is it heart wrenching? Is it sad? Is it, it's a lot of things, but at the end of the day, they're making a choice. And, and basically the article, you know, summarized it, all that money, uh, was that worth it? You know, a lot of the kids that I've reported on with you guys, they, they've been making those same decisions. And it just goes hand in hand with what I just talked about, truancy. So it wasn't for lack of money, and it certainly wasn't for the lack of the schools making the offer. And the last thing that I had, or, excuse me, I do have one other thing regarding intent or, uh, enrollment. I did reclassify our students at the high school based on credits earned. And speaking of football and classification, we now have forty-four seniors, forty-six juniors, sixty-six sophomores, and a hundred and forty-three freshmen. And talking about, I had a chance to visit with a long time friend of mine who used to be a highly successful, used to coach at Tri Valley. Brad McDonald, who we play Tri Valley down here. He was talking about their enrollment, how this was one of the first times that he recalls that they had three hundred kids in the high school. So once again, life is about choices. If they have three hundred kids in high school, and I'll just guess, I think I counted, I think they had close to maybe sixty-five or seventy kids out. So the state Activities Association is in a tough position. When you look at, we have that many kids, we have twenty-something making the decision to be committed, be there every day, play for each other, and, uh, do the best they can and learn some lessons for a lifetime. We have three hundred kids roughly, they have three hundred kids. But they have some, honestly, more students that are making the choice to take advantage of that wonderful opportunity. So it's a tough thing for those folks to, to, or to decide as well. Any questions?
Three, putting all the freshmen.
Yeah.
I've been visiting a few classes, and I tell you what, those, those, those teachers, my hats off.
So the reclassification too is, we, we count them for the grade level based on the number of credits they have. So if we've reclassified somebody that should be a sophomore in age or number of years they've attended here, but they didn't reach that number of credits, we've reclassified them as a freshman. If they by the end of the semester earn enough credit to bump them up into sophomore, then we do make those bumps up as well. So there are students that will bump up from the beginning of the school year, half semester time, and then they'll be back on grade level. And then will be moved up to be a sophomore, moved up to be a junior, or moved up to be a senior. So it's not a one direction always. We do have students that at semester time will be reclassified back to where they're supposed to be, and will be able to graduate on time with their peers as well. And then the summer credit recovery program helps with that, um, and credit recovery during the school year helps with all of that movement as well. So, so the middle school, our current enrollment is about two hundred and eighty-five. We still have daily kids coming in, um, some coming out, but more transferring in. So our numbers continue to grow. Our parent teacher conference, you can kinda see the trend with grade level and age. So at fifth grade level, we had fifty-three percent, uh, turnout for parents. Sixth grade, forty-one, seventh grade, thirty-nine, eighth grade, thirty-eight. So the older they get, it seems like the tougher it is to get parents to sustain engagement and come to conferences. But, I mean, those aren't, those aren't great numbers, but they're not awful numbers, especially that fifty-three and forty-one percent. Um, middle school's also working this year on completing a comprehensive needs assessment. That includes getting feedback from various stakeholders. Parent surveys are available at both kinds of conferences and online. Um, next week, staff and students will complete online surveys. And the data from the surveys will be used to help identify the areas we need to prioritize for improvement moving forward over the next year or four years. So we're working on that, um, currently at the middle school. Um, student behavior has been extremely challenging, not gonna sugarcoat it for you. Ninety-five percent of my days probably spent on the behavior for us. And I ask my colleagues and Dr. Meyer, is this typical for this district? And they say, no, no, it's not. And so, um, I don't know what the trend is, I mean, we can guess. Um, lack of structure during COVID, a lot of kids staying home and not having that kind of structure. Lack of better word again, it's created a lot of pushback. So we're working through that, but sadly, because a lot of the days spent on that, a lot of the really good work that I would like to do and would like to do is left undone. I think, I've been, today, I found how the opportunity to sit through a whole class of one of my teachers so that I could give them feedback. And I think that's probably only the fourth time this year I've had that opportunity. And that's not okay, because, you know, part of behavior is tied to what's happened in the classroom, whether it's lack of engagement, or whether it's young teachers needing guidance on classroom management, or whatever the case may be. There's a lot of factors involved, but, um, it's, it's a struggle, uh, not in lies. So that's kinda what the days are spent doing. Like I said, today was better for the first few hours, and then I got tied back down to behavior problems. So, um, talking, it's not just this district, reaching out to administrators across the state, across the nation. You can read about it, you know, whether it's somebody's blog, or whether it's a, you know, a professional association, you hear the same kinds of things happening everywhere. So it's not a unique problem to this district, I don't believe, not from what I've seen. So that being said, I would like to end on a positive note. So we do have a lot of students doing some really great things. We have a stay old theme this year, encouraging students to continue to use old behavior. And so we have individually recognized eighty-five, not eighty-five students, because some students have gotten recognition twice for their behavior, but eighty-five times, we've individually recognized students for their positive things they're doing. We've also had three, three occasions, we have another one that's Friday, where groups are receiving rewards for whether it's, um, attendance, whether it's turning their core in, you know, those kinds of things. So there are some good things happening too. Um, I will say, from my perspective, and I hope my colleagues feel the same, but it's, it's, it's probably ten to fifteen percent, if even, of the students that I spend my time with. So overall, we've got a lot of really great students here. It's just, there's that percentage that are very needy and need a lot of attention, so. But like I said, there's a lot of great things happening too. Does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, one other thing I wanna say too is we, we still struggle for subs too, so if no one can fight the need to subbing. I've subbed a number of times too, which is good for me to, to do that, I enjoy doing that. But a lot of times we're pulling in parents who really should be working with students who need that one-on-one help, or, um, should be in the library, or should be, you know, there are other things that go unchecked. So, hey, it's really weird to meet stuffs. It's a great place to work, cause it's great, it is. I mean, there's the challenges, but there's a lot of good things happening too, so, okay.
Well, I got a question. Is, is there a possibility with the issues you're having, um, that you could give Dr. Meyer ideas of how we as a board could address the fixables? Cause when we take teachers away from the students, then you away from your teachers, and this trickle effect is gonna be long-term. But I know, I don't, unless somebody on the board knows how to do an immediate fix, which I know we don't. And then Dr. Meyer can maybe get that to us if there's something that you as administrators come up with or a plan. It'd be nice to fix it sooner than later than have you come back second semester and give the same idea and us do nothing, doesn't make any sense at all. So I, I, it was just, if you got time, I don't know if Dr. Meyer could get something to us if there is a plan. I don't know if it's staffing, money.
Do we have a resource officer right now?
We're there. I have a question on it too. Does the parents come to parent teacher conferences though?
Some, but mostly not the students who deal with COVID, but a few.
Is the, is our school resource officer in the building much?
Yes.
Does it help when he's, when he's there?
Well, the school resource officer is not meant to be the disciplinarian. He's really meant to deal with the legal things.
Yeah.
His being present, um, I'm not gonna say it doesn't help, it could be worse, you know, his presence wasn't here. But I, I mean.
You guys can give up your, 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 to fill the.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, staffing is a disaster. I don't have enough time to classroom that with you either. Um, because, I mean, yeah, you guys can throw as much money at it as you want, but we need people. We need qualified people who can help fill these gaps, and we need them, sure, two teachers, you know? Um, and so, and trying to fill those gaps, I'm sure, so. Staffing is a big thing, and that's a big part of it. And, cause I think we can grapple and get a handle on it over time, because it was a period of time. Instead, this is nationwide, is my guess, right? It's a period of time and the lack of structure that really has created some of these issues. And let's face it, it's changing the world a bit too, but it's creating a lot of those issues. And so, yeah, we can continue to brainstorm and work and try to find solutions. Somehow, we have to figure a way to entice qualified people to be here, but every district is saying the same thing. So, um, that's a great question. We can certainly brainstorm, boy, if I had, you know, those are the things we need to do. But we can certainly talk about it, come up with ideas, absolutely share those ideas. I think having the, the behavior person in the building is gonna be great. If we get a couple of folks that are, um, trained and certified, that will help.
I'm just even thinking, even get creative and not having to have, I know you're short teachers and parents, but maybe classifying a different position. But take away Mr. Frederick's truancy paper, I mean, I'd rather have him working with the people instead of, I mean, I know we need him in truancy all the time. We talk about it weekly, and, and to you to not have to deal with the, the children and their causing a problem in the classroom. I don't know if we make the position, I don't put the stuff over, but that is not a parent, not a teacher that is dealing with that stuff to take the load off of our admin. But anyway, it was just a suggestion, if you, you guys would know more than we would.
The dean of students, you know.
So in our funding right now, currently, we have, um, five new positions that the board authorized for creation with successor funding. So we had six positions that were created. So we had six positions that were created, only one of them of the six was filled. At the middle school, we had two positions that are unfilled. We have them advertised at this point in time for semester-based hires. If we would have other good applicants for those positions at semester time, we could possibly backfill into some of these other five open positions, certified positions that we have open. We're trying to hire really good people as they come to us and kind of looking at what can this person bring to the table. For instance, there is an individual that we did hire this year that we didn't know where that person was going to be placed when the person applied earlier or late in the spring and early in the summer. Knew that we wanted that individual here, but kind of had to figure out what role that that person was going to be in to plug that person into a good position. So as we look at some of these December hires now, and I'll be going to a job there in Vermillion early next month, can we entice somebody to come in at semester time to just help put more certified people in the building too? Because if we can get more good people in the building, that's going to reduce some of the distressing work a little bit as well. But unfortunately, every school district in the state, country is kind of fighting that, saying, I'm not sure how to.
Is there an option to consider using some of our students for these parent positions when they've got two back-to-back study halls or ACT and a lunch? If you have a kid that's got a three-hour block or, I mean, have we considered using them at a Westside or a middle school when they're seventeen, eighteen years old?
So I believe that some of our high school students have signed up for a education internship where they would be eligible to work at likely Westside to help in some of those support roles. I don't know if we have students that are in that yet or not, but we have discussed that that's a program that we, we could offer as well. So, yeah, so we're trying to put those pieces together too, that if they have open time, how can we help them come into a pipeline and support kids while they're still here, so.
And I'm not trying to make more work for anybody. Like I said, we won't know how to fix any of it if we don't have ideas. But I know we're not in your guys' role at all. So if there's suggestions, I guess just move it up to whatever. I'm sure we'll try and help however we can.
My report is similar. I did hand this to you, so I'll give you all of it. I'm sitting at three ninety-two. Of course, numbers change, just like this is what we said daily. And we do have more students than we're meeting. And so we are working through that. I did take a snapshot of referrals, office referrals, a year ago. It's hard to compare last year to this year, but I think it's just interesting to look at that. And this is just from August to September. So last year, I had seventeen new ones in that lot of time. And this year, I've had sixty-six. A lot of them have been, the majority of them have been in our smallest, my smallest wing, my J K K, adjusting, just adjusting to school. And I attribute a lot of that, I don't write excuses, but I do leave facts. And these little ones haven't been in a public school or public setting, period. And we do have yeses, yeses and noes, no. And it's not for compliance other than for safety. And we want to be safe so we can learn. So we're working through that. Typically, when we do six, we're moving heavily in content. We're in week eight. I'm going to meet with every grade level of teachers tomorrow and just state again how we need to just continue to move back to basic steps. One-step directions, two-step directions. I'm at about thirty-eight percent of my students at benchmark this year, which means that they're ready for tier-long instruction. And when you're lower than that forty percent, then you want to make sure that you're providing it for all students. So we're just taking time. I don't think this is anything not expected. No recovering, and we might need quite some time. I, I agree with you. We need to meet, we keep talking about strategies of how to work through this. But that's, that's a big portion of even my day. One of my pairs that I did have in that ISS role is on maternity leave and I do have somebody that is in that role that is really in this role. But I have to completely remove that person just to be present in the classroom because that's the greatest need. So I've taken that back into the office, which I believe that's where I need to be. But just like Jesus said, that does take me away from what I used to do instructionally for staff. And I do have a lot of new staff this year, and they give me support. And getting new people is, is a good resolution, I agree. It's just with new people, that's, you're looking at maybe a three-year transition time before that person is ready to take a change in the pandemic. So it, it just takes time. I did get my fall conference members. Last year, we had higher numbers, just, I wanted to show you that. It was on the phone and, and percentages were greater. And I also believe we have many people just waiting for that call and wanting to know about the conference onsite. You can see they're, they're lower about twenty, twenty to thirty percent in summer levels. Even the staff, the parents are on site. So our numbers overall were lower, but a little higher than what middle school. And that's why we're not only elementary school. We did our ticketing, ticket out, kids love that. We gave out some prize prizes for the book fair, and I thought that was great. As David said, on Friday, the parents are coming. And I'm just so thankful that they're coming to our school. They're very excited to come to school, and they're going to hire trucks. And likely, they're just going to wow us with their equipment and what they can share with the bus. And having it there saves us busing back and forth. We spent most of the time on the bus and less time in the train. So we're hopeful that this will be a positive way moving forward. I did share with you some of our training that we are offering. Still just trying to pour into those first and secondary teachers because we didn't get all of that last year. Something I need to add on here is we are, because we're in this debate round with our literacy coach, we are having a family-friendly walk through October twenty-fifth, eight-thirty to eleven. So if you have a pen or pencil near you, and if any one of you would be interested in that, I know that timeframe might not be ideal, but I, our rep got ahold of me the other day and I gave her some parent names, and I know she's a little scared. So I might be reaching out to her, we'll be. We've done that before, we just haven't done it quite this year. It's a lot. Eight-thirty to eleven, she gave me. I mean, I don't think it'll be the whole entire time. So I think it should have a lot. If that would be something you want to do, I just believe. We'll get through it, one day at a time. I know we feel supported and we thank you for that. It's just a lot.
Can I just share one thing that you said particularly in your department, you're struggling with? This is just kind of random information here. With this whole marijuana smoking thing, I have a lot of pregnant moms that I see all the time, even if they're not in mind. There's no marijuana in their pregnancy because it's safer than cigarette smoking. So guess what they're finding? That babies more inclined, they'll even say, oh, my neighbors smoke marijuana all the time and baby turned out fine. So they're doing it in their entire pregnancy. And what we're finding is when these kiddos get four or five years old, they're having behavior problems and learning disabilities, big time. So I do not see these numbers changing very readily, especially with the direction of marijuana. So I think we're going to have hands full for years.
So then, to remember, while in year two of our J K program, and considering, you know, when you even look at some of this information and some of these numbers, we do cap J K. We have a full-time certified teacher in there. We have a full-time parent professional in there with a very small number of kids compared to every other one of our classrooms to help students basically learn how to do school and make sure they're ready to go into kindergarten. But we're seeing more and more kids that can even need that type of support. And, and there again, it just comes back to adequate staffing within, within the buildings. So if one teacher is gone for the day, or one pair is gone for the day, it kind of has this ripple effect through the building as well. That somebody's not quite where they should be, we can make it work, but it's not ideal in circumstance. And, and you know, if we look at our district enrollment numbers too, I have some historical numbers for you in my report. And so twenty-seventeen, we only had eight hundred eighty-five students. In twenty-nineteen, we had nine hundred and fifty-nine students. So that was a significant increase in those few years. Last year, we had nine hundred and eighteen point fifty-six. But by about this point in time last year, we had about three hundred of those students were off-campus and off-site. So now we pull all of those kids back in, and they haven't been in school for a year, two years and a half, and they haven't been in these structured environments for that period of time. Where we take our littlest ones, and they haven't been in any structure at all. And it's no one's fault, it's just where we are at this point in time. It's just a different scenario than we've seen before. And like administrators have said too, it's not a Sisitun problem. It's not a South Dakota problem. Every administrator I talk to is seeing basically the exact same thing, regardless of what district they're in. And we're all trying to figure out how do we now continue to support, knowing that at the back end of it, there aren't a lot of teachers available to, to hire. So even today, I was talking to a number of superintendents in a meeting. And out of that meeting, there were probably fifteen positions already that people know they need to hire probably at semester time. And when you're taking that across just, you know, eight districts, that's a lot of people trying to find as semester grads, or how do you find these people to come into our schools? And we're all fighting for the same people. Going into teaching right now, you, you get to pick exactly where you want to go because there's just so few coming out. I was talking to the dean from Northern last week. They have fifteen secondary teaching candidates right now. Fifteen. So that means there will be fifteen teachers graduating from Northern that can go into middle schools and high schools in South Dakota. So when you take one of the Quarston schools in South Dakota for teacher ed and teacher prep, and they have fifteen that can go into middle and high schools, the numbers don't work. We have a number that we hire every year through alternative certification process. We hired three from the Philippines this year. And I would say that when we look at our numbers that we hire through alternative certification and even from out of country, we're higher than most school districts. But that's where we can find people to come and provide services for our kids. So those are the processes that we go through. But we're fighting for the same exact features that everybody else is, which is, which is difficult. Our geographic location is tough. Nobody wants to drive through Summit. Nobody thinks about Sisitun. And that's why I try to get, you know, like, I'll go to Vermillion next month to just put our face in front of people. Because I've found that every time we go to a job fair, we pull somebody back from that job fair, either the current year or the following year, just by making those connections and making Sisitun known. It's a way for us to advertise the school district and get in front of people who are actually coming into the field as well. But, yeah, it's just tough, and we're all fighting for the same people.
I'm positive, I will say, before I came tonight, I met one of our running teachers. She had an attitude and a go-out spirit. She came to me today and she said, I just love it. I just love being here. Thank you for hiring me, I'm so glad I'm here. So we need to know that too. We need to. And she loves her school, she loves culture, she loves being here, she loves community, and likes her team that she works with. She goes, I have a family. Besides, I have a whole family, I have a school. So that's something Sisitun does very well. And tonight, every school always has that ability.
And we're trying to put more of those support structures in place too, with Dr. Alka coming and working with our first and second year teachers. We're trying to pull in some of those resources to help provide some of that foundation for our newest teachers onsite, because they really do, they need it, not because they're not competent and able when they come up, but it's just another person in one of those instructional roles to help them become an even better teacher when they come onsite. I know that when I was, my first year teaching, I'm surprised I got hired back. I mean, it's just one of those things, like, you, you think you know, but you don't know until you're in the classroom. And to just have somebody that's around to help provide some of that support, like the principals do and like Janine does, it's just additional layers that most schools don't provide for their staff. And it's just something that's, that's appreciated and needed. And the more of that that we can do, that's, that's helped towards something else.
I was with my one of my first year teachers. Also, since you think, and said, how's it going, you're surviving? I love it, I love it. So that's, it is.
Maybe you should bring them up to the job there.
Yeah. Well, I was going to talk about the, since our last meeting, another of our teachers from the Philippines has arrived. She is at Westside in the fourth grade special ed intervention position. This morning, I learned that the last of the hires that we had should be here late Thursday night to join us in the, she'll be in the transition program to fill that position. But I, so we are getting those people here and graduating them after we get to the positions, I think. And they, one of our, the reason that we filled three positions from the Philippines because one of our teachers that was previously from the Philippines moved over to the teacher to be the teacher of the English language orders. So Eric Batty, he was in that position. In that program this year, we had been down a little bit. Numbers, I think, were about at fifteen for a case load. And all of a sudden, this year, we got about six newcomers. So newcomer means they, whatever grade level they come in, they speak very little English. So we've got some at high school, middle school, and even at Westside too. So she's very busy not just keeping her current case load kids and serve, but also having to screen and then write the plans for these kids who speak very little English. So that program has been a very explosive vision too. Also, last week, we had our National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month event that we have every October. And we had a speaker who was a teacher who has autism. And the lessons she has learned, being a person with a disability in her profession, it was a very nice event. The staff from the book we have, office and everybody, come over as a part of that and maybe help us to get the kids and new disabilities as well. So it's always a really nice event, so thank you for allowing us to do that.
Just a couple of things. I guess I already went a little bit through our enrollment and how that shifted over the past few years. One of the things that you used to us is last year, we had a state aid fall enrollment of nine eighteen point fifty-six. We can only count a student based on the percentage that they're actually in attendance. So for example, with the new homeschool slash alternative instruction regulations that came through now, we can have a student that is homeschooling the part of the day and then enrolled the part of the day. So we don't get to count that student as a whole student. So on this enrollment roster, they count as a whole person. But in our official state aid, they would probably count as a percentage. So if they're coming to three classes a day, we would do the calculation out to figure out what percentage the three classes are of the seven periods a, and then that's the percent that they're enrolled. And then that would go into that state aid funding. So that's why we can end up with nine hundred and eighteen point fifty-six students is based on that time of their enrollment. But we do expect our enrollment to be up a little bit from last year. I believe last year, when I presented this information, she did that twenty-nineteen state fall enrollment was the highest it had likely been since about that two thousand and ten time frame. So it's trending downward and upward again. COVID cases since the beginning of the school year up until, at this point in time, we've had four COVID cases. And unfortunately, the average notification time from the Department of Health is now sitting around that five-day window. If an individual doesn't answer the electronic survey that they get sent, it's sent, to my understanding, every day for seven days. If they don't respond to that survey, then the Department of Health just doesn't do any additional part. So last year, they were making a personal phone call to every one of those individuals so they could make sure they're identifying the school that they might be affiliated with. This year, that backup is not happening. South Dakota Record Card data, each year, we are required to present our information and data, and I'll share more with you on this next one when the information is completed. The South Dakota Report Card will come online on Thursday. As a part of that, we always go through a data appeal process, and we look to make sure that our students' attendance data is recorded correctly, and our students' earned balance assessment data is reported correctly, our teacher certification is recorded correctly. And usually through this, we come up with two points that are usually not correct, and those include high school completion and then on-time graduation. So through that process, high school completion, we had four students that they were counting as non-completers. We did appeal that data, and I received word late yesterday afternoon that they approved all of those students for high school completion. And this is oftentimes, they transfer out of the Sistin School District, but the Department of Ed doesn't follow them in the system, so then they say, oh, they didn't complete high school, even though they might have officially transferred elsewhere. And also, we have on-time graduation. We had five appeals for students that had achieved on-time graduation. Four of those were approved. One student who completed a GED rather than graduation, that appeal was denied. In statewide news, the Teacher Compensation Review Board met and approved a final report because it will be sent to the state legislators who review this legislative session. If you remember, the Blue Room Task Force came into play five or six years ago. That's where that teacher accountability payment piece came into play, where you had to answer, you know, accountabilities for teacher pay. Although there was a tax increase, and although there was some significant core movements in South Dakota teacher pay, South Dakota was number two for teacher pay increases across the country in the past few years. We were at the beginning of the Blue Room Task Force in fifty-first place in 2016. We've now made it to the fiftieth ranking in the country. So when we look at average teacher compensation, we're now at the fiftieth place because the other states have increased their teacher salary and teacher pay as well. And that's just one of the huge barriers we have in South Dakota, is nobody will come to South Dakota to teach because they know that there's this teacher pay issue and concern that runs forward. And us being, again, at this northeastern peak, we're close to Fargo, and we're close to Monmouth, and we're close to Minnesota colleges, but nobody wants to come to South Dakota because it's still this whole piece of South Dakota teachers don't get paid well. SR2 and SR3 funding, I just wanted to provide you with a bit of an update on where we are in those grant applications. All of those applications have been submitted to the Department of Education. So if you look at page three in your report, that is the SR2 funding that must be spent by September of 2023. And you can see the level of detail that each of those things needs to be reported as. One of the really fun things that we get to do is anytime we have a dollar amount that deviates from what's approved in the grant application to what is actually spent, either a dollar more, or a dollar less, or hundreds, or whatever the case may be, we have to do a formal amendment process with the Department of Education to make those numbers balance entirely. So our accounting systems have to match up with whatever's in the grant, and then if anything has any type of shift, we do have to do some back and forth with the Department of Ed in order to be able to get reimbursed for some of those expenses. All of these things, please remember, too, the Department of Ed has received all of the funding, so the Department of Ed here has all of the funding from the federal government. We do have to spend district funding first, and then we have to provide receipts to the Department of Ed in order to get reimbursed for any of those costs. So we have to spend the money upfront and then request a reimbursement for each of those things. And if the code doesn't line up correctly or perfectly, then we do have to do that back and forth piece with the Department of Ed. SR2 or the ARP funding is on the back page. That funding must be spent by September of 24. Please remember, too, that twenty percent of that has to be calculated towards learning loss, so that is where that new funding for the six additional certified staff members came into play. And you can see there how that funding has been filtered out in that application. So one of the things with that ARP SR3 plan is that as a school board, you got to approve the district-wide operation plan in August. Most school districts have not had that application approved yet, so they're not even looking at the funding for most school districts. Ours was approved in the first review of it. I had to make one minor change and put my contact information in, and it sent it back to the Department of Ed, and it was approved that day. So most school districts don't even have that piece of it done yet, so they're not even looking at the funding because they haven't had the requirements that the Department of Ed's set for the rest of the district operations plan. The other piece where this gets a little bit interesting as well is if a district has any type of construction project, all preliminary documents and documentation has to be uploaded and provided to the Department of Ed first, and then the Department of Ed is working with an architectural firm to review all of those proposed construction projects. My concern with that is just the timeframes in which this funding has to be spent. Twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four are going to be here very, very quickly, and the Department of Ed has not processed one major construction review or approval yet. So when... So they have the money, but they have not processed one of these requests yet for a school wanting to do a major project. So it's just that whole timing makes me very concerned in the backend about what is going to happen and how are these projects going to come through before that funding has to be spent? It can't just be allocated, it has to be spent by those timeframes. So I did not know this year, but in past years, I've gone to the NACIS conference for Impact Aid in Washington, DC. That is one of the big considerations that was brought forward to Senator Thune, was just the, is there going to be some type of provision to extend the use of this funding a little bit further? Because it's almost impossible to get contractors and vendors and some of these individuals to get these projects fit out and working through those. So that's something that South Dakota is pushing for, is trying to get some extension on that funding as well. That's all.
Motion to adjourn. This is a conference. I have a phone.